All right, it's called a meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge.
Yep.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which stands one nation under God, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody to the work session agenda of Monday, March 18th, 9:30 a.m. I will ask the Secretary of Treasury to call the roll.
Trustee, President Mr. Horowitz.
I'm here.
Ed Warner, I'm present.
You are here.
Joe McLaughlin.
Here.
Matt Parsons.
Present.
And Richard T. Maron, I believe is not on his way.
Not here yet, but perhaps he'll get here soon.
We have a form, so we're good to go.
All right. First discussion that we have to have, very important, is the priority dredge list. And we've got our usual locations listed, North Sea Harbor, the Fresh Pond in North Sea, Sabonic Cold Spring Inlet, Noack Creek. Very important that we, you know, make it known to the county that we need these things, you know, done, right? We get a lot of dredging done by Suffolk County dredge crew. They're great. And at this point, is there anything else that we think?
Well, I mean, I could extend on that a little bit. North Sea Harbor has been another ask to do a spring dredging. We've done it in the past. I believe they did a project there last, this fall, but it was not adequate enough to keep it open for the summer boating season. So I've been contacted by a couple individuals asking if we could look at it as a possible spring dredging. We've done it in the past, but we need bird monitoring and other stuff there. So it's a complicated process, but being that we've done it in the past, I'd like to have the Bay Constables doing a site visit and the soundings for the spring to see the status after the winter storms.
I'll be getting complaints on that too, so it's something that definitely has to be looked at, and it does affect a lot of commerce.
Well, it does affect the commerce as far as the marine, isn't also the environment because the North Sea oyster growers in there, Mark Matthews, there's a lot of shellfish that is in there that keeps the water good, and we have to keep the water good for the shellfish. And it's also emergency responders need to access that inlet, you know, day and night. So a safe navigable inlet is very important.
Right. Fresh Pond, North Sea is always a constant, very dynamic situation that requires, you know, attention. And I know the difficulty that the Suffolk County dredge crew has in kind of hopscotching around the different areas, logistics, the various different requests from other townships, and not to mention meeting the goals that, you know, US Fish and Wildlife and all of these folks that are watching for spawning fish and birds to try and figure out, you know, which is the best location to get, at what point in time. It's a, you know, more difficult task than it absolutely seems, and you have a limited amount of time to do this. They call it the dredge window. So it's important that we, you know, we articulate the needs of the town, and then they're gonna try and do the best they can to accommodate. And they've always been very.
They've been very, you know, we get more dredging done than any other town on the east end of the county because we have a good environmental staff. James D'Orri, our environmental man over there, and good staffing gets the information with the birds and everything else that we need. So we're much further ahead than many of the other towns. But I have one question, and I know this has been an ongoing project for about, oh, about 60 years. Fort Pond, are we gonna put that on a priority dredge list for the college, being that that's been pushed ahead again? And I did have a conversation with the, you know, the lead person over there at one of the events I attended, and he was very concerned that he doesn't want to see it lose momentum and continue to be able to be put on a priority dredge list, even though sometimes I think it's just a placeholder.
It is a placeholder. I think, you know, we, you know, we could certainly add it on there, but I think because of the fact that, like you say, it's been going on for 60 years. We've been going to these meetings regularly that have been attended by, you know, the upper brass of the Suffolk County dredge crew. I think they're well aware of the fact that, you know, we're, we're in need, the university, you know, everybody's in need of that getting dredged. I think it was just about working the logistics on it. So I don't know if we put it on there and they go, "Yeah, yeah, we know about this." You think it's helpful? Add it on there, you know?
I think it's a, because we do have two areas that we have, you know, worked with as far as, you know, deposition sites. And I think that's, that's the biggest, usually the biggest lift as far as these projects, these new projects where we're gonna put the material. And I think we've, we and the town have accommodated the, you know, that whole process.
Right. You know what? My concern with Fort Pond dredge project, and I, you know, I've gone through, you've spent years in those meetings, and I've spent years in those meetings, is that with a dredge project with the magnitude and importance of this size, you're gonna get like one good shot to get this thing done. And I really think everybody should get around the table and take the best shot that they can and get, get as much of that material out of there and not, not kind of do a project that's, you know, less than, less than what's really needed because they're concerned about some other, other issue. And then, you know, having to reexamine the situation in a much shorter period of time in a much more difficult environment because of the fact that, you know, there are a lot of areas that are not suitable for de-watering dredge spoils or placing dredge spoils. And right now, there seems to be, you know, several areas we've supplied to, right? And then there was a discussion of even pumping material further upland and doing a larger project, which, you know, some people were having an issue with. But I really think that they need to do the best job that they can at getting this done because it's, it's difficult. And you get like one shot at it, so take the best job.
Yeah. And I know Far Pond and Middle Pond are two areas that every two to three years need to be, you know, looked at. And I was down there this morning before I came to the meeting, and both of them are gonna be, needed to be placed on for the full priority dredge list. And working with the county and the DEC and, you know, have an alternate deposition site, which was a historic deposition site because of the water washing away some of the, you know, land. It's gonna make it more difficult, but the county was agreeable, and I believe the state was agreeable, to use the end of Far Pond Road and in front of the rock preventment, 72 Far Pond Road, they were gonna look at placing that material there. And I think that's gonna be a good, you know, a project as far as seeing how erosion has happened over time and how we can fill back in some of the beach that was historically there and grant some of the people in the public beach access to the beaches east of 72 Far Pond Road. So I think it's a, that's a, has a huge community benefit. And it's, you know, we worked on this literally the whole time I've been on the board to try to accomplish that. As you know, you've spent a lot of time with those people down there. So I think it's another good project where we've managed to meet with the, you know, with the county and work with the outside agencies to have a good project become a better project.
There's, you know, other benefits to, you know, working with these entities also. I mean, the town's trying to protect infrastructure on road ends that are getting eroded away that were much longer. And then, you know, aside from this, we're gonna be working that project with the Army Corps of Engineers that'll take place sometime in 2024, after the season, where they're gonna be getting the intercoastal waterway up to standards. And that's gonna be beneficial to the people of our township. That's a totally separate function than what we're talking about here. But I think the, you know, the combination of all of the above, you know, I think is gonna really put, you know, what the trustees' concerns are and people, the town, and everybody that wants to enjoy the waterways and navigation and, you know, getting better flow in a better position. And, you know, it takes a lot of work behind the scenes. And I know there's gonna be some folks out today, I believe, from the Army Corps. They're gonna be examining a couple of locations, dredge spoil site. I know they're gonna go over and take a look at the, that Gabion, that whole rock situation where the horseshoe crabs keep getting caught at the Teana Bay side to try and see if they can't cover, cover that up, you know, with some good fresh sand coming out of the bay, which would be helpful. And then they're also gonna take a look off at the eastern side of the Shinnecock Canal to the south for some fresh sand gonna get pumped out of the intercoastal waterway in Shinnecock. It's gonna kind of shore up an area there that's trustee-owned property and bolster up that infrastructure. They'll be out taking a look at that, among other things. You know, dredging, you know, is very, is very important to keeping things running around here. And I think that, you know, there's a symbiotic relationship even to our bird program and dredging because without a good bird program administered by our staff, you can't get these things done. You gotta account for least turns and what red knot birds are eating and the pipe and plovers, obviously. And you have to have a good handle on this or you can't get any of this done.
Many of the deposition sites around the mouth of the creeks and harbors that we are discussing are prime, you know, you know, plover and least turn nesting areas. So it's really important that we maintain these and bolster these areas up so that the birds can nest and have a good offspring. And then hopefully, our endangered species, someday we can take them off the list. So that's the goal.
That's good. So I think we've made some adjustments to that list. Is there any further adjustments? Anybody else thinks we need to add on to here? You good? Joseph, you good? All right, so we can, we can finalize that, James. Send that over to the crew.
Yeah, I'm gonna send it to Rich first. Rich needs to do assessments of all the water bodies that you guys put on. So I'll send that to him, and once I get all that, I'll forward it to the county.
And can you ask them if they have heard for the local rumor mill, if there are any other further, you know, creeks and harbors that need to be looked at? I know in Sag Harbor Cove, there's a spur inside the bridge on the north side, which has become problematic. But as I explained to the local, you know, ship insurer, boatyard owner, that, that is outside of the trustee's jurisdiction because there was the, our jurisdiction takes where the old railroad spur used to come into Sag Harbor. Everything that was east of that, going towards the North Haven Bridge, is stayed on underwater land. So that would be a conversation with the county and the state. But I said, once that conversation got started again in the use of a deposition area in Sag Harbor, that our board would be supportive of whatever could be done down there as far as that dredging happening, you know?
So the harbor master, you know, that's a good, that's a good thought because the harbor master has.
I've been in correspondence.
Right? He's expressed some concerns. I mean, would it be helpful if we indicate something on here that we've gotten some concerns and perhaps they need to?
I mean, I've contacted the county. I've had multiple conversations with the county. I've had several conversations with, you know, the marina owners and the harbor master. It's just, I believe it would be up to the village to really take the initiative to push that forward. I believe is, whose area is that? Chip's area? So that would be a conversation maybe with the mayor and the harbor, Bob Borey. He's an individual that I've been having conversations to push it forward. I mean, it's something that we've advocated for the whole time I've been on the board. But in 17 years, the spur's gone from a little spur to a much larger impediment as far as navigation. And also the boats that are in Sag Harbor Cove, some of them are 16, 70 feet. So they need a, as a vessel owner.
The boats have gotten bigger, the channels have gotten smaller.
Right. So you know what? Why don't we, why don't we indicate, just put an addendum on here to perhaps have them contact the harbor master, Borey, over in the village, and that we would, you know, be supportive and, right?
Yeah, Bay Constables do have a lot of correspondence with them.
Right. So why don't you indicate that on there as well? And then they can contact our office for any support assistance that's needed, if they can take a look at that in consideration as well. Okay? Anything else on this matter? All right. We're good?
We're good.
Okay, so let's move on for the permits that we're gonna be, or the application we're gonna work on today. Ann Barron Wyman DeBauer, 14 Shinnecock Road in the Village of Quogue for land use. How are you?
Good morning.
Hi, Kelly Rosato with Land Use Ecological Services. This one was on, I think, a prior work session where it was requested that it be clarified, the 10-foot buffer landward of the bulkhead reconstruction, which areas are going to be timber, which areas are going to be stone. So revised plans were submitted February 21st to indicate specifically what areas were what.
All right, so let's just, let's just back up. We're gonna reconstruct an existing bulkhead in place or landward of the existing bulkhead with vinyl sheeting, 282 plus or minus linear feet. 52-foot bulkhead return is proposed to be reconstructed in place or landward along the northern property line, and a five-foot return is proposed along the south property line. 39 plus or minus linear feet total of bulkhead is proposed. No increase in height of the bulkhead, and as you're indicating, a 10-foot wide buffer area. And now we've made further clarifications here.
Yes, so the, the plans that are last revised February 20th indicate the areas where there'll be timber, areas that will be stone, and areas that will be planted, landward of the bulkhead. And Sheets four and five are zoom in of the plan so you can better see.
Can you pull that up, James, for everybody?
What are you looking at?
Sheets four and five both kind of zoom in to the, give a little more clarity on exactly what's proposed where landward of the bulkhead. The deck is existing. There is a portion that's going to be removed. You can see on sort of the top part of Sheet four. And then there's areas of stone landward of the deck and then to the south of the deck.
What, what is the plantings that's within the, like, 10-foot? What are you, what are you proposing there? Or are you gonna leave it stand? What are you gonna do to stabilize that with the grasses there?
I'm looking at the plan right now. I don't see that they have a specific grass specified, whether it'll be lawn or whether it'll be a native grass.
It can't be lawn.
Okay, so then.
It's gotta be something, you know, that's.
Yeah.
Saltwater, plant species or something.
Right. That was the whole purpose of the objective, was to get native vegetation into that area and then be, you know, make the determination of, you know, how much, you know, stone or gravel's gonna be there because you do have a lot of green lawn there, and it would be good to absorb some of the nutrients before it runs right into the, to the creek, you know, and into the canal and, you know, and onward. James, can you, can you? Get that any bigger?
Yep.
What do you want on the top part?
Let's just take a look at the whole buffer situation and see.
It's more of the, the bottom of the plan. The other, that's all deck, but.
Right, that's all the existing deck, except, like I said, the one portion that'll be removed and planted. And we could certainly specify.
So you basically just have stone within there now, right? Is that, is that what that is? Like gravel?
Correct.
And it doesn't do much bio remediation in my mind, but that's really.
No, no, I mean, you know, if you look at this, right, you've got, you've got a lot of grass. And you got, you got it sloping right in, so you're gonna, you know, you wanna eliminate, you know, some of the sheet runoff from getting in there, so, you know?
Like a 60, 40, 60% gravel and 40% like Cape American beach grass or something like that?
Something that's native, you know?
Something that would be good around the saltwater environment too, because this place floods on the northeast or deregulating and, you know?
Do you want to take another look at this and make a determination of what species? And, you know, speak to the, your client to say, "Look, let's, you know, get a determination. We're gonna do, you know, this type of planting and what do you want to do?"
I mean, if you look at this one photo here, there's all natural shorelines on both sides of it, north of it and east of it. And, you know, and being that western Shinnecock Bay has been an impaired water body for decades with the brown tide and other, you know, issues up there, I think it would be, you know, good for the owner of the property to be a good steward for the environment, working with the trustees, the, you know, the college and everybody else, the governor and Cornell. And we're doing this reseeding and all the work that we've done up there to promote good water quality. This would be a small part as a landowner to help, you know, the environment.
Right. It helps them out too, obviously. You wanna see cleaner water than, and sometimes, you know, when you run the boat up into the Quogue Canal in the summer, the water looks pretty bad, right?
Pretty, pretty brown.
Pretty brown, you know what I mean?
Unfortunately.
All right, so why don't you?
So we'll, we'll revise the plan to specify the species and, and add some vegetation to the area of gravel on the south side.
Yeah, I mean, you've been at this for quite some time, you're firm. You understand what we're trying to do. You know, we wanna get a good balance and try and absorb some of those nutrients and get some, you know? Because you got a lot, there's a lot of grass going on there, so there's plenty of, and we're not asking for.
A lot of slope too, if they're not, if they're not utilizing lawn care that's, you know, advantageous to the environment.
Well, yeah, that's, that's the thing. We're not asking for a lot. We're just asking, you know, to work with us, you know?
Absolutely. Nope, understood.
All right, so this, let's hold this one for now until she comes back with, come back.
We need a revised cover sheet as well.
Oh, okay.
Just noting the vegetation.
Noting the vegetation, okay.
Do you hand the next one to her?
Have them all, Scott.
Two seascape?
So two seascape, this is a proposed dock on a, on a flaglot. There is an existing dock that will be removed, a small four-by-16 wood dock that'll be removed. And then a proposed four-by-35-foot open grade fixed pier with a seasonal ramp and six-by-20 float. The ramp, the, the new dock is proposed extending, you know, straight out from the, from the flaglot where the existing dock is sort of perpendicular to the shoreline. This one will be, will follow the property lines and will be within the extended property boundaries into the bag. And that's there, that's the case.
Can I ask what the proposed water depth underneath the floating dock would be? It's on the, on the survey here, but I can't read it.
I know.
Now, James, if you can blow these things up, it would be good.
It looks like 1.4.
So that the, the float will actually be chalked to maintain two feet of depth beneath the float. Sheet four, the profile shows the chocks and then the, and then calls out the 24 inches, two feet below the float.
So 1.5, would that be 18 inches? There's no water there.
Yeah, it's not even floating down the interior of it.
No, it wouldn't, it would actually be resting, it looks like it's gonna be resting on the bottom.
It won't. It'll be chalked. So the float will be on Sheet, if you look at Sheet four, chocks will be on the pile, so the float will sit.
That's five.
Two feet above, two feet above grade at all times.
That's four. That's five. Oh, 24 inches, okay. Needs to be 30 inches.
Don't we usually just not have a floating dock?
Yeah, really. I mean, normally we would ask just for a fixed pier in this situation. Because I mean, that's, I mean, on a winter low tide, that it's gonna be completely dry there. It's only 18 inches. I mean, I know.
You also have violation to the seven property line?
That's my next question because it looks like.
Six foot on one, four foot on one side and one foot on the other side.
Yeah, it looks like to me that the dock is, yeah.
I think you're gonna have trouble with that, buddy.
I think you're gonna have to maybe go back and talk to, take another look at this one as well.
Yeah, with regard to the extended property line, the, if you look at Sheet two of eight, you see that the neighbor, I guess to the south, has a dock on the other side of the property. So there's no, no issue there. The neighbor out to the north has a very wide shore, you know, very wide shoreline here, so.
It's still gotta be 10-foot within either side of the property lines regardless.
Right. I mean, that's not, that's not possible with the 25-foot with, yeah.
Yes, so if you, you know.
If you eliminate the footer, then you'll be well within the 10-foot on either side of the property line.
Yeah, I think you're gonna have to go back and have a conversation with them to get this to, get it to specif, you know, see it, meeting the minimum issuing standards.
James, I, I know on the previous docks that we looked at like this, I mean, it doesn't look like it's gonna impede navigation, but putting a dock on an angle in front of someone's house, it usually ends up laying out in front of the neighbor's house, and then their view shed usually gets interfered with. That's usually what I've seen happen with these projects. And there is no water there. I mean, 18 inches of water is like.
Have a conversation with your client, and then let's put this on for a future work session. After you do that, if you can contact James and let us know when you wanna go back on.
Yep.
All right, let's, let's address these issues. We'll put it back on when you, when you're ready for that. Let's go to 41 Doone Road.
Yes. So this one we just got, two days ago, and submitted an updated cover sheet and an authorization. The owner's looking to reconstruct the bulkhead in place here.
What'd you just get, two days, what did you, what did you?
This, we just got this one two days ago, this project. It was being handled by someone else previously.
Okay, oh, I see.
Yeah, so, so the, the project is to reconstruct our bulkhead in place. Obviously, from what we've gleaned in the application materials, there doesn't seem to be proper plans that were submitted. So we have reached out to, to an engineer to have them draw proper site plans.
Right, so you wanna put this, let's, let's.
Yeah.
Let's put this on hold, let you, since it got transferred over to you, let's put it on hold, get your ducks in a row, then come back. Let's not.
Yeah, no, the only question I guess I would have for you is, is, you know, is there anything in looking at just the site that you would want? Yeah, that you would want specific to, you know, a typical bulkhead reconstruction.
Buffer.
Yeah, you're gonna need a buffer.
Land sheets.
Yeah, you're gonna, and, and be specific about it, know what we're trying to accomplish, so design something.
Yeah, you've got a lot going on with this inset, like, I mean, that's obviously, is this, is this the neighboring property? Is that that hedgerow that's going down the middle, or is that part theirs too?
So this is this, well, it's a market-up survey. The property line, like, the boat slip is, the property line bisects the boat slip.
Okay, so it's half and half, it's shared?
Yeah.
I mean, that gets a little hard because, you know, obviously this is where they're gonna access it, so you're gonna have to come up with some foot pathways of where they wanna access the boats or whatever they got going on there.
I mean, you know.
Grades, heights, you know, like what, you know, you're gonna go for the six inch.
We know what's needed.
Right, so the reality is, the reality is this, I mean, just the same conversation on the other one. I think you need to just take a look at how the application can buffer the waterway. And really, for something with that 10 feet, you kind of got a feel for what the board's concerned about. And since, you know, it got transferred over to you, get your proper plans and then take a hard look at that buffer. Get specific on the species, have a conversation with the applicants. And then, and then again, when you're ready for that, get ahold of the office and we'll put it back on a work session. That way you'll show that buffering, that there's a, you know, cooperation for the sake of water quality. It's not that tough. That way you'll show that buffering, that there's a, you know, cooperation for the sake of water quality. It's not that tough.
Is the project looking to do an in kind in place of a replacement of a bulkhead?
Yes.
So basically, no height raising?
No, no height raising. Actually, I shouldn't have said yes. I believe they're looking to convert it to vinyl.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm just looking at the logistics of the canal you're on and how everybody's consistent all the way along there with the similar heights of bulkhead. You know, if you were looking to raise it, like, some people want 18 inches, 24 inches, it's going to cause problem on either side of the property. So keeping it consistent and then, you know, taking the bulkhead out that is currently there and replacing it, it's not going to, you know, basically impede into the canal. It's an inevitable waterway, so, yeah.
And just get proper buffering.
Yeah.
Obviously, use, you know, use the best materials, compliant materials.
I believe this is yours.
Is that, or is that hers or is that...
Yeah.
No, I think I gave, no, I think these ones were yours.
These are mine?
Okay, then those are hers.
These are...
Some of them came across here, I know that.
Yeah, so these are probably yours. You could have those.
Those are nice color for pictures.
Yeah, I know, these are photo. Those are suitable for framing. Alright, so hold, hold and hold, but reach out if you have any further questions.
We'll do it. Yeah, I'll be in touch with James on the timing.
Meet down there and look at it or something, you let me know.
Yep.
I have the next one.
Yep.
Smith Creek, 124 LLC, 124 Springville Road, Hampton Bay is the old Scutler Mitch's Marina. It's taken over by a new owner and they're looking to do some reconfiguration of the, you know, floats and finger piles and, you know, it's some dredging and, you know, it's, it's a, it's a pretty big project. So if you want to give us the narrative of it?
Yeah, yeah, not a problem. So they, this owner had gotten approval a couple of years ago to do this, sort of the south half of this marina with reconfiguring some of the float docks and whatnot the trustees granted approval for. Now we're back to do the northern half, so everything north of the travel left essentially. They're basically looking to remove all of the existing float docks and replace them with, replace, you know, the sort of mishmash of float docks there with a 233 foot by five foot main float and then several finger floats, two foot wide to three foot wide, 20 feet long to 40 feet long, as shown on the plans. The length and width of the floats gets, you know, longer and a little wider as you go towards the south. There is some dredging proposed on the northern portion. Let's see, I forget what the...
3,600 square feet.
Thank you. Oh, 2,300 square feet actually with 80 cubic yards of dredge spoil in the northern portion. And it's really just kind of right along the bulkhead.
It's 2,300 feet because you have 3,600 square feet portion here on this cover sheet.
Yes, no, I think it got, it did get reduced a bit, the dredging footprint. So, yeah, 2,300 square feet. And I can always submit a new cover sheet to reflect that.
Yeah, because this is completely different than what, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Same dredge depth though to minus four at mean low with 80 cubic yards or so of spoil to be trucked offsite for disposal. We did have...
To certify landfill, right? Because I know there's, there was some issue because the highway did a dredging just north of that and it was questionable, the material. I know you guys have done some analysis of the grains and analysis of the content, correct?
We did, yeah. So the, yeah, so we did do some analysis. We took several samples and it was over 90% sand and less than 0.5% total organic carbon. So for DEC, we didn't have to do any further sampling with that.
Good.
So, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a good project and, you know, it's, it's a marina that's been purchased. It's one of the marinas on Smith Creek that, you know, serviced a lot of the public, so I think it's a good project. And I believe we have, James, we have everything we need as far as, except for a revised cover sheet, correct?
We need a revised cover sheet, yeah.
Yeah, we need 2,300 and 80 cubic yards of material.
So that can advance then, as long as we get that.
We have stamp plans as long as you don't want the plans changed.
No, the only thing that would be needed is a revised cover sheet in the plans. I mean, I went over them. They're pretty consistent with what we've allowed there in the past.
Yeah, I would say advance it.
Okay. Hampton Watercraft on the canal, you got the information from my office as far as the owners and...
Yes, I did. Thank you very much. I didn't have a chance to go through it.
That's, that's another hole.
Yeah, yes, yes.
It's a project in itself.
Yep. Alright.
Good.
Thank you guys very much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
And this next one, we received an email requesting it to be moved to the next work session from the applicant. You can't make it.
Well, that was my next comment because I don't see the consultant here, so...
Place it on hold.
So we'll place it on hold. We're good with that.
G R Realty Holdings LLC, 187 Dune Road.
What's up there, Mr. Billy Mack?
Morning, Billy.
This is a dune restoration at 187 Dune Road in Bridgehampton. We're just looking to truck in some beach compatible sand to restore a hollowed-out section of the dune.
Can you get this done before season?
We're actually going to schedule this next fall.
Okay.
Okay.
I was going to say...
Change of heart.
Change of heart.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
It looked all good to me when you changed, you made the changes that we asked for.
I think we started into...
Yeah.
So that can advance.
Advance.
Okay. Wow.
Yeah, there we go. Imagine that. The next one up on your list...
You guys advancing it?
Yes.
Yeah, may the changes be requested.
285 South Side Drive, Bridgehampton.
Yes, thanks, Chip.
This is the one that we were kind of trying to whail away at, right?
Yes, this one we'd like to get done. What we're hoping to do, and you guys did a nice job cutting the Sagpon Inlet and stockpiling sand there. Looks like a good project. We're hoping next couple of days with this western wind, that inlet will close and we can actually truck the material.
It should be closing it yourself.
Yeah, well, that's, that was my next question.
Yeah, no, that's not happening because we got this clover thing coming up and that's, that thing's been going in and out, in and out, in and out.
It's flowing nice.
Yeah, and I'd love to, I'd love to just see it going in and out, in and out, in and out, as long as...
As long as possible.
I don't see a lot of heavy weather to close it, honestly. I think that thing is just going to kind of...
Keep flowing.
Keep doing its thing, so...
If it doesn't, then we'll truck it around.
Stay away from it, yeah, please.
Absolutely. I was, you know, with these western winds typically they, it does...
Sometimes, but that thing is pretty deep.
Yeah, it is, it's flowing nice.
We're going to find out.
Yeah, you're going to know, you'll be the first to know.
Good, so, but I think with this, we provided everything you wanted and I think it's, this one's good to go.
Yeah, Ed and I looked, talked about it and you got, you have the, is it in there? Get about getting those poles at the posts out, the steel?
The steel posts that are on the beach.
Oh, yeah, there's some remnants of, yeah, all of that will get pulled out.
Put it in there, remove any existing exposure metal pole in the dune area.
Yeah.
And then I saw, I saw on the email that it was the updated, with the really early real hangup was like the snow fencing within the yellow and have you updated that, so...
Yeah, that's all good.
It's not on this one, James?
It's on this one.
On the revised copy?
In the revised copy, yeah, we're good with it.
You good?
Okay.
Yeah.
Advance.
Thank you guys very much.
Two for two.
There you go.
The 48 Redwood Road, Village of Zag Harbor.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Matt.
How are you?
I'm good.
So Matt Ivins for the applicant. Let me give you a little background on this one. So there was an application submitted to the board a while ago for this proposed dock. It was a little bit too large. Originally, it was proposed at a four by 10 foot ramp leading to a four by 46.2 foot catwalk, hinged ramp and floating dock. I was before the board maybe two months ago on this. And we came to the conclusion that it was, the conditions in the water were too shallow. So I redesigned the dock. We got rid of the floating dock, we got rid of the hinged ramp. Now it's basically a fixed platform on the end. We did get asked by other agencies to extend the landward side of the catwalk so we wouldn't be putting a path right through the wetlands, so that's the change. And that's really about it. We've just downsized the dock.
And James, is this the one that was hung up with the Army Corps?
That's a different one.
That's a different one? But this one's compliant to that, I'm guessing?
So you're working with the harbor committee on the landward end of it?
It's got the height.
Actually, yeah, Department of State, DEC, Army Corps, they all came back and just said extended landward.
They were alright with the height above the wetlands and all the...
Yeah, we achieved the height and all that good stuff.
And it meets your Blue Book regulation of 60 feet from the mean water.
Send it.
Yeah. Did a good job redesigning.
Yeah, headaches, trying to avoid headaches.
Well, you did what you had to do, you know?
Hey, Joe, do you want to do the one on Todd Point Road on here? Okay.
I'm good.
You got another one on here, yeah, if you, while you're here. Want to take it out of order, that's fine.
Sorry.
No, no.
Yeah, okay, it's, it's okay.
Okay.
Reiterate, Todd Point Road.
Yeah, I'll just go through that real quick. Joe, do you want me to do it or...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, this is a simple bulkhead reconstruction, no change in elevation. 10-foot buffer on the landward side comprised of beach grass, in and out, going from timber to vinyl bulkhead. That's about it.
And the buffer behind there is going to...
10-foot, yeah, Cape American beach grass.
That's a nice project.
Yes. Like you said.
Yep.
So you're getting, you're getting a good benefit then? You're getting rid of...
Yes.
So you're going to get a nice buffer where you have no buffer.
With Matt last week and it was a, you know, I had an issue with the, with the beach grass. He did say that they can have some additional renovations, right, for the property, so it's going to be...
So I do have a question because I think we gave a permit for this a while ago and then...
For bulkhead reconstruction or was it on that section or was it on, because they, they did do the opposite.
They did the other side.
Yeah.
Because I know the questions were that the original bulkhead was about 30 inches shorter than the one that is, you know, because they added six by sixes and six by sixes and six by sixes. So the bulkhead that you're proposing now, is it going to be the original height or is it going to be the height that's shown here?
It's going to match the height that's there now.
Which would be, you know...
I mean, that'll be flush with the remainder of the bulkhead on the property.
The reason I'm asking is because the bulkhead across the way that we permitted to is consistently high. And with northeast, this place floods terribly and it would just scour out and fill in this waterway that we had the county dredge.
Yeah.
So that, that's my concern that, you know, that you, that all the material on the property maintain on the property, not, not, you know, get...
Yeah, you're not lowering, you're not lowering the...
No, no.
No, because it floods terribly, even still. Okay.
I don't see any buffer language on the cover sheet.
Yeah, I'm going to give, oh, on the, I'll do that. I'll put that on the cover. And I got to get your stamp plans anyway.
So buffer language, stamp plan.
All right.
You want to approve or do you want to...
James, you want to advance it pending receipt of the...
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, I think...
If any revise, the revised...
Because you're right there.
Buffer language, yeah.
Buffer.
Yeah.
We need stamp plans anyway, so we advance for stamp plans.
Okay. And the revision. Yeah, we'll put it on in next work session. That way we have all our ducks in a row here.
So advance not...
You want to hold it?
Hold it for stamp plan.
Well, you're advancing pending the stamp plan.
Right, okay.
So advance pending stamp plan.
I guess you're going to be on for stamp plan review next work session.
Yeah, the final review. Okay.
Thank you.
Now we're going to go to...
Caroline Hirsch.
Exactly. Dynamic Legal, Kevin Springer. Dynamic.
Yes, sir. Morning.
Morning.
Alright, I think this is the one that I botched.
This is the one.
I apologize, that was, that was...
The end of the world, happens. I can't sit here and say I made the mistake. Yeah, so we were, there was, according to our last meeting, there was no...
The pictures were here.
Pictures or plans, but I believe you have them all.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a dock that was placed in without a permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, once we did that major dune restoration.
What is this, on the ocean side? Oh, okay, yeah. Because we had another one for the bayside a while ago too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And... Write the six million to UCA. Yep.
Looks like the dune restoration and sand fencing is working well. The stairs are completely buried.
This one's really behind my, it's all my time, so you guys would have a lot more backstory on whether you want to let it go. And obviously it's already been constructed.
Well, it's compliant with the material, it's, you know...
Looks like it's working.
It looks like it's working well. I mean, the grass is all around the dock and the handrails are only for the upper part off the house where it's pretty high up. And then when it goes down to the stairs down, which would be compliant with what we need as far as, you know, safe access.
They got an ass built, fee built into this thing as well?
I believe we owe it. I don't know if we paid it or not.
But they'll pay, they'll pay if they want the permit.
Yeah, we would rather people come to us and advance so we can...
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of discrepancy from what I heard. I don't know from when the restoration was done and then when the dock was started, so I don't think that we paid. No, we still have money.
Right, yeah, I got you. You probably paid application for yourself. Alright, so what do you think?
So we can advance it pending it's paid?
Well, they'll, yeah, that's...
I think we'll pay it.
See, that's a good, you know, walkway. It's not high up, it's not going to interfere with any bird migrations and stuff like that. There isn't a lot of, you know, as far as railings and wires and stuff like that. So that's what we've consistently approved in the past, so it looks good.
Yeah, and if that dune grass keeps holding, it's just going to keep going up and up and up and up.
Yeah.
Hopefully be the idea, so we have to do this again.
Okay.
We don't have stamp plans for this.
You don't?
I don't think so. I have a set, mine's, I just have one that's not stamped, but we should definitely have it.
We can advance it pending stamp plans.
Yeah.
And just get them stamp plans.
Sure, you don't have that chip because I actually stopped by and saw her. No, it's just a survey. It's a big set.
Yeah, I mean, there's the, this out here.
I mean, James, you have no record of it? I mean, you can get them, right?
Yeah, I can definitely get them. Like I said, I just on the way here, I picked up a, they're not stamped, but I picked up one.
Alright, you know what? Advance it pending and then look at this internally.
Look at this internally, it looks...
Advance it pending.
Well, I'm going to do stamp plans right after.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
It'll be on for...
I'll pick them up there.
Yeah, we'll get the plans and we'll do the final review at the next meeting and we have everything, then, you know, go to the 1 o'clock meeting.
It's not like you're waiting to build it, right? Plug down over there.
Easy. Alright.
44 Cobb, sorry, this was just, we were just, we needed an updated cover sheet and the stamp plans. It could be advanced, nothing changed.
We have it all?
This is the Cobert?
Yeah.
Well, no.
Town of Southampton project.
No, this is the 44 Cobb aisle.
Oh, okay.
This is the one that I was working at that was, I raised the height of the bulkhead so the road runoff didn't go over and all the plant things were native and I had the high tide butches on the other end.
Okay, yeah, I remember that one, yes.
It just needed to be an updated cover sheet and stamp plans.
Okay.
Which I believe I just want to double check.
The email said they were sent, so...
Alright, stamp plans are good. Yep.
We good?
Yeah, I have an updated cover sheet here, so...
Good.
Yeah.
So you know what it is? Right? And this one's showing.
Yeah. That's why I questioned it.
The address of the property, it doesn't mean a homeowner.
No, no. Look at this.
Oh.
Follow me, this is leading us to believe it's a town of Southampton project.
Oh.
Right, you see that?
So who's the, who?
Right.
Who's the resident or?
This is, this is.
Yeah, that's why I said.
Right, so this is Christopher Beal?
Yeah.
Right, but.
Oh, so that was an error?
That was an error.
Yeah, no, so we're, we're looking at it thinking it's a town project.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, that's my fault.
Yeah, no, no problem, that's why I'm like, that's why you were saying this is the culvert.
That's a hangout.
Because the claim and the culvert, so we, so we were working on that, so when we saw that, that's why.
See, I think this could be advanced.
All good.
Yeah, that's why we're looking at it, and we're like, wha- what? You know?
All right.
Good thing we cleared that up.
All right, Joe, it's on to you, bud.
It's Monday, bud, come on, guys.
Conic Arena.
All right.
Conic Arena.
That's JMO Environmental. Glenn. How are you?
Good everyone. Good morning.
What do you doing? I'm good.
Where are we? We're at the stroke. Was the dock removed?
Oh, he's got it staked out, so it's, are these, is this currently, the stakes there currently are, it's just, I know they were put there a while ago, so.
After the last meeting, you guys had, we left to remove the floats, they removed, like, the thirteenth, the twelfth or thirteenth of February.
Okay.
They sent you photos, and these are kind of, before and after. So the floats that had crossed the property line are gone.
Okay.
That's always a problem.
Yeah.
And moving forward, they're going to stay, gone, correct?
Pardon?
Moving forward, they're going to stay gone? They're not going to reappear there?
Not there.
This has been a bone of contention for a long time.
I looked back into the records and realized, man, that's, you know.
Yes, so, um, yeah. Well, after this meeting, I'm going to go down there and look at the site here, and, you know, see what it looks like as far as where the stakes are, and how it logistically. Now, the stakes are going to be the ones in front of the wetland here. Everything is going to be done seaward of them, right? Not anything closer to the meadow?
Correct.
Yeah, you want to preserve that meadow?
Well, I mean, that's, you know, that's a very fragile shoreline, and literally, it's less than twenty-five feet to the roadway there. So, so, I mean, you know, when we originally did the bulkhead replacement back, I don't know, about twelve or fifteen years ago, we were very aware of lowering the bulkhead down, making sure that the wetlands were maintained.
Didn't slough off.
So it didn't slough off, yeah, so.
James, can you put the project description up?
Yeah.
Do you want to pass this down?
Sure.
You know, I'm, I'm familiar with, you know, a lot of the.
So we don't have a ten-year maintenance dredging permit?
Correct.
Yeah.
So. So that has to be taken off the cover sheet.
What's that? An applicant seeks a ten-year.
Yeah, that, that's got to come off, that's got to come off the cover sheet to clear up any misconception or ambiguity. We don't, that's, that's, the state has a ten-year. We don't have, we don't have a ten-year. We have one, and you can do four renewals.
Yeah.
But you got to take that off the cover sheet, because that will create confusion.
Okay, yeah.
So we can, you know, I think we can move forward, but we need to amend that wording, because that's problematic.
I can do that this afternoon, I have a.
Got you. Yeah, you know what I'm saying? That way, we don't want any miscommunication, or mis, you know, classification. It wants, you want to make it clear that our permits are for the term that we grant the permits, and not going to be, you know, superseding that with some wording there that's going to make a problem.
Okay.
So we got to get.
Four renewals, you said?
Yeah, my recommendation would be to do the project, have someone get in, do the bathymetrics of, after the project is done, and see if you had acquired the water depths that you initially indicated on the application, or permit. And then if they're what you need as far as for navigation and everything, then we can close it out. But if you need to do more dredging, then you can just pay a fee to do another dredging, and not pay the whole nine yards again. You know, basically, you know, that, that would be the way I would see it, is that?
Well, you, you got to be consistent with what our Blue Book is, and we don't, we don't do that, so they're going to have to do the one year, and then just renew it, keep the thing running for the four more years. If you're only going to take out X cubic yards, you know, then that's, that's all that you're dealing with, based on the assessment. But we need to make sure that our permit terms and conditions run, you know.
And what timeframe you got going on? You going to do it in spring, or?
What time?
What's the timeframe you have for the briefing?
What is the dredging window?
I've submitted those, I think they're closed right now.
Yeah, everything is closed right now, so it'll probably happen.
Yeah, you're going to comply with the state dredging window.
Yeah, the windows didn't come inside, they, they overlap each other at one point in time, but I think the state goes later until the fall.
Yeah.
All right, so I, I think that you're okay to advance at this point, but you need to amend to eliminate that wording.
Okay.
That way, there's no misunderstanding.
All right. So advancing pending the wording, I'm going to.
Yeah, updating cover sheet.
When you send in a notice of commencement, just have the person in our office contact Joe here, it's his area, so he can go down, if he wants to oversee the dredging and see what's going on.
Now, you said last time as well, and you mentioned earlier about the state, when do you need a state buy? I mean, it's been a little ice and stuff, we could.
I mean, if you're not going to do it until the fall, then I would do it by the fall. Don't do it now, because the boats are just, I mean, I just, you know, if they're there, I would like to take a ride down here and get, you know, look at the bulkhead and look at how.
No, I understand that.
So they're not there now, so it's no, there's no sense of us going down. So just let the board know, you know, a couple of weeks before you do the project, that we can go down there and look at it, and, you know, get an understanding.
I just want to do it the right way, because it's been a long fight.
Yeah, it's been a project. Yes.
Good job.
All right. Thank you, Glenn.
Well, thank you very much. Be well off.
Thank you. One ten-five Todd Point.
Anybody representing one seventy-five Todd Point? Had a feeling.
Yeah, haven't done this before. Apologize and advance.
We'll get you on the mic.
You got to sit down, state your name for the record, sign in.
My name is Michael Alex.
So you're looking for pig dis, pig dis, pig dis structures?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Are you looking to replace that, replace any materials?
I need to repair the stairs. This is, something just came up, I, I don't know what the rules are about anything, so I thought I would ask. But generally speaking, no, I'm not looking to replace anything, but the stairs are shot, and so what do I do legally?
Maybe replace it.
Are there not, when I see new stairs now, there's, what's this, there's like plastic steps and holes. What I've got is ancient pieces of wood.
Yeah, so the through flow, the water will, you're going to.
From blowing them apart again. Yeah, better shot, you can't stop ice, but you have a better shot of that.
And that's called through flow?
Yeah, or light penetrating decking, light penetrating decking, what they call it. They, they sell it in pieces, and it, you know.
Three feet, four feet, five feet, and six-foot wide pieces.
Yeah, three feet will leave.
There you go.
Thank you.
And this float, is this going to be used for the, if not compliant?
No, it's not compliant. It's a swim float.
Yeah.
It sits right on the bottom.
Yeah. So let's remove that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not, oh, that's on the, so here's the.
It was, it was there we bought the house.
Yeah, but it's.
We'll clean it up.
Yeah.
Whatever I need to do.
Yeah, that's, that's not permitted.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, historically, there was eelgrass in the whole entire creek here, I don't think it will longer exist, but, you know, anything like that would cause shading on submerged aquatic vegetation, so.
Well, actually, and I think that way I would build south fast, because it's, it's.
Everything grows there, yeah. Is there?
So, these pictures that you have of all these timber piles, are you looking to do something with these things, or what?
I don't know what's.
This here.
Oh, that's, I was just trying to illustrate, that's the end of the bulkhead meeting, the, it's, the instructions said to send files.
Yeah. They're, they're great, I, we just, we're just trying to figure out what you want to do here.
Right.
I don't want to do anything.
He's legalizing all of that.
This is, so.
Oh, you want to legalize all of this?
He's trying to legalize all of it.
Yeah. Um, I, we, I filed a complaint about my neighbor building on our property, and so she called, and this is retaliating, because she said we didn't have.
The last meeting. This is the last meeting, this is a carryover from the last meeting.
Yeah, so that was retaliation.
Oh, no, is this what?
Next one. Here it is.
I believe both, both properties have violations.
Oh, God, I was trying to slide my bias here.
Yeah, but that, that's not.
So is, is there anything, is there anything on the original survey for these stairs, or is there anything that's showing?
There's an original bulkhead, it looks like it was there, but it was raised up with three.
Is it permitted?
There's a survey in there that shows the dock and the steps that's proposed to be legalized. I have it up right here.
It looks like it was placed in in the fifties.
But I mean, do we have, like, record that the bulkhead was there?
You're going to have to do a title search on the property and pull up names and see if there's a permit that was granted to the previous property owner for this.
Because otherwise, they're applying with fire, again, like we would be in over in North Sea.
I mean, you'd be permitting an, an illegal structure, because it has treated lumber. That's, that's the whole thing. So, yeah, I mean, what.
First, we have to see if there was ever a permit pulled for this bulkhead in the first place.
Right, right.
The Bay Constables asked us, we, we pulled all the permits that we had, we could not find any. That's why the Bay Constables gave an O B for this.
But did you do a title search with names back to the fifty? I'm, I'm just telling this gentleman here, because it looks like the bulkhead is putting, put in in the fifties and sixties. If you had a name of the property owner back then, then we could pull, you know, that's a title search.
I only, I know two owners back, I think it's the eighties, Pam Geiger, that's as far.
Yeah, but that was, this was, bulkhead was.
Older than that, yeah.
I'm going to say, just off the top of my head, that none of this was permitted. And I'm, I'm just not, I'm just, just looking at the way that it was constructed.
Probably wasn't.
You know, it was not, you know, like, it was not done by kind of.
Yeah, but there's a bulkhead.
The bulkhead, yeah, I have the bulkhead.
There's a bulkhead that I would say was probably permitted back, no, you don't have the picture, this is.
Yeah, that one?
Yeah, that's, there's an actual bulkhead.
That might have been pulled. All the stuff that's above that was never.
Not this stuff, no, that's all, that's all legal. That's all, that's all, exactly.
It's a mess.
That's why I was asking, what do you, you know.
Because you got returns here, and it's a shame you guys just couldn't just get along. Now, now you got a big box of worms.
The problem is, they, they actually build on our property.
Yeah.
And they, we've asked them, they were friends, and we've asked them, asked them, but they are, they're, if you look at their property, they've built all the way down. These, they're always building cement construction.
I was there. I was on site.
I was there, too.
So I walked the property.
Okay, so we had just kept, like, trying to be friends, until my wife figured out that they'd built a walkway on our property. We said, please move it, someone told us with the rules, or I, I'm an idiot, I've never owned a home in my life before. And someone said, it has to be ten feet in, so we asked, they said, no. We asked again, the owner, John McFadden, died, elderly man, we were waiting for them, because their lawyer didn't want to meet. And then instead of getting in contact with us, they expanded the thing last fall, and that's when I ended up talking to Officer Downs. But I don't know the history of the property.
I think, I think honestly, we're going to, we're going to have to get some backstory on whether that original permit that was built there was even ever permitted. And if it was not ever permitted, then we're going to have.
Yeah, take it out.
Then it's going to have to be taken out.
Yeah.
Basically taken out. So I think that's your first press, and you might want to have somebody that's professional, like.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, like, that, that has, that has, yeah, you need somebody to.
An engineer.
Yeah.
What I, what kind of?
A consultant.
A consultant, an environmental consultant.
Okay, so when you say taking, remove the thing that's there.
Legally, legally, because nothing was ever permitted, if, I can't say that, if nothing was ever permitted, it's all going to go.
Okay.
Right.
And then what happens, so that the property isn't just falling?
Then you have to replace with legal, with Blue Book complaint materials, so.
Shoreline restoration.
It has to be done correctly.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
I think a lot, a lot of research has to be done here.
Yeah, but if you do a title search on your property and look back to the late fifties, early sixties, a people that, a chain of title.
Mm-hmm.
And get us those names to our office, we have, you know, permits that were issued back all the way to the, like, nineteen twenty-eight. So if that, which is a lot older than what you're looking at there. So if we had a permit in our office that was for that bulkhead, the original bulkhead, not the, the four-by-fours or six-by-six that were added on, then we, then it would be a permitted structure, and then we would ask to work with you as far as mitigating what was put on top of that original bulkhead, if it was an original bulkhead.
Okay, so I go and do a title search to see who owned this place back in the fifties?
Yeah, I would say, go to there, and then come up with a name, contact our office, because we have a catalog of names and permits.
And I just send that to the trustees' main?
Yeah, you would ask, file for a FOIL request, Freedom of Information Act. Stephanie Stone is in our office, she's the lady that does the FOIL requests, and then she would be able to look for the information if we have it in our, you know, in our system.
Okay, just, so I do the title search, I get that information in a FOIL request to Stephanie Stone.
Yeah, well, once you get the, the names, you, through the FOIL, asking for any of these property owners of the residents that you own, if they had, is there a permit for a bulkhead in their name?
Okay, uh, search.
Because we have to clean this whole thing up now.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a big mess that we have to clean up, and we've got to get some basis to start somewhere.
I've done this a couple dozen times, it's, you just need names, and, you know, we can do some research.
Okay.
It'll take a little bit of time, but, you know, and, and if you're in the process of doing this, when you go to court, you can explain to the judge that you came before the board, and you're in the process of trying to get the proper permitting for the property.
Okay. Uh, this is the first time I've heard the words going to court, I don't.
Well, you issued a violation, correct?
Yeah.
And then the next part of the violation would be go before a judge, and he would make some kind of ruling, or set some kind of procedure to either- I mean, Mark, you want to speak to that?
Mark is our attorney. Exactly, you're explaining just right, and then the judge will normally stay everything until there's some feedback, if you explain that there's a, you know, title search being-
You're in a process of doing, rectifying the problem, correct?
Right.
As long as you keep making forward progress, everybody's working together.
I don't know what stage the constables are at now, in terms of papers being filed, so it may already be on the road, it's being put on the next docket or the one after.
Yeah.
But the trustees, I suppose, would have discretion to stay the matter now, or to contact the constables, but it may be a little bit late for that, so-
Your contact person for this whole project would be Joe here, he's, you know, on a board, and I'll gladly help him, you know, or Mark through the process, because, like I said, I've done it more than once. Right, but the thing is also, it could get complex, you may need, you know, you may need some counsel also, or some professionals to help guide you through this process, because it does get, you know- It gets, you know, and if plans are needed, if there's engineered, you know, you don't know where you're gonna need, so you may need some help, it may be beyond-
I surely need some help, I don't know what I don't know.
Right, well, you may be beyond what, you know, an individual homeowner is able to provide, as you see, we're having conversations all morning, asking for stamped engineered plans and hydrographic survey, you know, there's all types of things that go into the permitting process.
I mean, this was all pumped anyway, this was all pumped at one time anyway. So, I would- there might be, you might have actual permits for this, but you don't know, I mean, this might have been-
There was a FOIL that was submitted back in November, and there's no records of any permits, but that- we only go up till, like, the seventies, back to the seventies, right?
This is much older. You gotta go beyond that.
They pumped this back in the fifties, so, yeah, there might be something, there might not.
I- I think we- we don't need any further speculation relative to this, quite frankly, I think what we need to do is the proper research, and then- and then get some professionals involved, so that we can best deal with cleaning this up. Give our office a call, and Jessica, we'll give you my number or his number, we can talk and go further, okay?
Great, thank you very much.
Joe will be your contact person, and I'll gladly help.
That's Michael, pleased to meet you. Uh, the thing I do immediately is the title search and get that information to Stephanie Stone.
Yes.
Correct, yeah. And I would keep all this as a package for when you have to go before the, like, I'd show, like, keep this as, like, showing, I'm- I'm making an effort when you have to go before the court, you know, like, you know, like, have-
Uh, Officer Downs said that, and he gave me the time schedule, and I- I know I got it, but you-
Good- good records of- of your- your forward progress on trying to rectify the situation.
Okay.
Perfect.
What's your email address?
It's my name, M I C H A E L, A L E X, the digit one, so it's Michael Ox number one at Gmail.
I'm gonna send you Stephanie's contact information.
Thank you so much.
You got it.
Thank you, everyone.
Cause we can't do it until the- until the courts-
He's got a long record, right?
He can start to do- Well, he can start doing the research.
I'm gonna, this is, I can get the na- get those names, that, I can do that.
It's doable.
It's doable.
Thank you, um, thank you very much.
One step at a time.
Yep.
All right, obviously, hold.
Come back.
Okay, Decar Shores, Regina, for Craig Arm at eight oh one Montauk Highway.
How are you doing?
I actually don't have that file.
You don't?
No.
So I was over there last week, and I thought it was straightforward, however, today I'm realizing that it's got a history.
It's got a history.
Yeah, okay.
So, basically, um, the permit was completed by a different person under a different name. When they did the project, they did some minor modifications, and there was supposed to have crossover steps, and so there's some minor alterations, they did some railings. So, I went before the board to basically legalize what was there. There was some, uh, also buffer being mowed, that is now mowed anymore, so it's basically just kind of housekeeping, right now, to just clean up what was done.
Right.
That's it.
Okay.
And thank you for bringing it up, cause, you know, sometimes stuff just gets put aside, you know, so, it's just cleaning up, housekeeping really, that's it.
James?
Yeah, I think the main issue is the, uh, was the mowing in there.
Right, yes, on notice of noncompliance, that's number one.
Right, then what was out, what else was on there?
Uh, no four foot by three foot stair up to catwalk, number three was the long catwalk, measures a hundred and fourteen feet, exceeding permitted measurements by eighteen feet, and number four was no pass repass stairs.
So where are we at on that now?
Just legalizing what was there, so we bid as-built plans, uh, certified by the architect, it's actually-
What is it, so do you have the length?
There was tons of, like-
I didn't check the length, I didn't know that there was-
Do you know if the length was brought back to the permitted length, everything else is good?
Well, I think you're looking to modify it, right?
Right, no, looking to modify, um, so, it was basically-
So it's more than just housekeeping, it's a modify- modify-
It's not the portions of the dock were, um, switched out. Like, it didn't get longer.
Than the original per- yeah.
So, what they did was they lengthened the catwalk to follow the grade, um, instead of, you know-
Did it go landward or seaward?
Landward.
Landward, so what does it look like relative to the plans that we have? The actual versus the plans?
Well, it looks like the plans right now.
It does?
Yeah, so it went landward.
They're modifying to match the plans now.
Okay.
So it got left, they didn't get throughout seaward by all.
And the modified plans now meet blue book compliance? And you have crossover steps?
No, because it's all intertidal, it's all cordgrass in there.
Yeah, I don't- I don't- I see the- I don't see the G I S.
They had originally applied for it, which was silly for Donald Jewell, you know, like, cause you can't walk in there anyway.
Well, my question is, the dock that goes to the- to the bay, is there any access off that dock in case someone falls in, is there a ladder, or some kind of safety ladder or something, that you can get back on the dock?
The float.
Yeah, but I mean, if a- if a child falls in, and how is he gonna get back out of the water?
It's- it- well, it's actually all the grade, he basically fall in the cord grass and fall on land.
Well, I mean, this, you should probably have some kind of ladder.
Just a ladder or something.
Yeah, so you can, if you- if you want, if something drops in the water, you want to go down in the cord grass and fish it out, and you can't reach it with a pole or something, you know, a- a safety ladder would be, you know, I- I know Trustee Pell was very adamant about putting safety ladder on a lot of his project.
At the end of the dock, like a catwalk, this is actually, like, on land.
It's on land, so, so, do you have pictures, you have current pictures in there, James? Cause I don't know what the elevation of bulkhead is.
You can actually step from the cord grass onto the bulkhead.
I can't see- Yeah, well, let's try to get the visuals, yeah, that way- Yeah, I mean, if it's a foot, or is it ten feet?
The cord grass is like, four feet high, it's crazy.
Yeah, but if it's- if it's a bulkhead, it can be a foot higher, it can be eight feet higher.
I think the bulkhead's actually lower than the cord grass.
Okay, I- no, I mean, I'm just trying-
It's an old bulkhead, that's sort of dilapidated.
Yeah.
That's just kind of going to the ways of the wind, so you actually could, like, walk up onto the grade.
Okay, so there's no steps off the bulkhead?
No, no.
I'm- I'm just trying to make it, you know, if someone falls in, that, you know, there's not a problem.
Yeah, no, it's actually, they would actually fall on land.
Okay.
And be in the middle of cord, very, very sharp cord grass.
All right, now we gotta go upside down, here we go.
So you see how the grade comes up, and there's spartina, pretty much, and then it walks up to, like, a dilapidated part of an old timber bulkhead, and you literally could just walk up onto the property.
And if the- the deck of the, uh-
See, it's all land.
Catwalk is so low, why do they need handrails for?
Were there handrails on the origi- on the permit?
I believe Donald did put handrails on the original permit.
On the original permit?
On the original one.
You have that?
Yeah.
No, I'm just, I mean, it kind of- Go back to those handrails, like, I agree, I mean, the handrail's there, it's like, uh, I mean, if there's no, this is only a foot high, I mean, you really don't need a handrail.
He's got- he's got a little kid, so he's got little kids.
Yeah, I mean, he did, it's kind of-
They just went for it and hope for the best.
I- I have to see what the prior plans, and all this other, what's the prior plans? What's the approved plans look like, the original approved?
Like the original, original, I'd have to look, Donald Jewell did them.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that- that, we need to get, we need to go that far back, right?
This one's, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, that's- that's, no, that's not even them, Donald Jewell drew.
Those are them, James?
Yeah, this was the original.
These are the original plans.
All right, so they had them on there, they were approved with them on there, so-
Yes, they were approved with them on there.
I mean, it's- it shows it, the double rail doesn't show the, you know, the-
Yeah, they're not exactly the same style, if you look at that, but-
It doesn't specify, it just says provide railing.
It doesn't specify it?
No, they got, I mean, they have that, they have a double rail.
Yeah, they had a double rail on that, original approved.
Then it's- then it's legal. Yeah, I would- I would say we're not gonna do that, but- but when you look at it now-
In the future, keep it in mind, but it was permitted.
Cause when you look at it now, you're like, it's, it's too much, but if it was on there and it was approved, it's on there and it was approved, and that's it. When was that- Game over. When was that approved?
Well, the original one was approved a long time ago, along with the D E C permit, that approved actually the house and the dock at the same time, and then it was approved later, Craig, cause Craig did his own drawings.
Okay.
And so it was approved with the railing.
All right. So the question is, are we now compliant and matching, that's the question?
Yes, so what's on the drawings is what's there.
Matt, you good?
Yeah, it's compliant.
Yeah.
Oh, this is the property right next to the turkey, right next to the-
Yes, the bridge.
Bridge, I remember this was-
It was both fills, both fills old.
I- I remember this very well now, I was there a few times. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we're good? Yeah. Okay, yeah, okay, advancing.
I'm still here.
You have another one here.
This next one is Forty Club, Forty Club Lane, Rumsfeld.
Okay, this is Jim Trainer, it's a bulkhead reconstruction, um, pretty standard, matched the neighbor's height to the southwest, um, which is exactly twelve inches higher, uh, with a vinyl sheet piling, and- Go ahead and- go ahead and give it to me, cause I'm already ready to negotiate.
Well, that- the bulkhead is like a mess there.
It's a mess.
Completely failing.
Sinkholes, yeah, it's really bad.
Like the- the dock walkway, you get pictures, the dock itself is on a steep angle now, but the bulkhead is like, it's like pushing out from the sediment behind it, you know, they have the fencing, they have the stone, um, as far as, you know, I would, once again, we would love to see more grasses in that buffer zone, as much as possible.
So currently, there's a stone buffer there right now, along with the walkway. I did, um, propose, which I'm allowed to try to get for the client, um, a four foot wide walkway untreated, the length of the structure, as well as the additional six foot to equal ten foot of buffer area, um-
What's the additional six foot gonna be?
Well, it was stone, it is stone right now, actually.
What are you gonna propose?
This is- this is my idea. So, um, as I was drawing this, I had advised the client, um, he's got some really gorgeous red cedars, uh, about forty feet to the north side of the bulkhead, and I said, well, they are gonna get destroyed, because pretty much everything, twenty feet behind the bulkhead gets decimated, and he was heartbroken, actually, so we are actually digging them up and saving them, and replanting them, that's what. Um, and then, uh, I said, listen, Jim, trustees charge per square foot for your walkway, do you want me to save you a lot of money? So I'd like to cut back the walkway to eighty feet instead of a hundred and eighty-two feet, so it's a hundred foot.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, like, why is he spending all this money?
Exactly, exactly, he doesn't need it, he doesn't need it. So, right, so not only are we gonna replant those cedars, um, we're going to, which I could specify in the permit, even though some of them go beyond ten feet.
Yeah, if it's out of our jurisdiction, I don't think you need to, uh, to do that, and I think-
I just wanted to tell you.
No, I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
And then I'm gonna cut back the four foot wide untreated boardwalk to eighty feet instead of a hundred and eighty-two, so it's only in the right side, so if you're looking at the water, the right side, the south side of the property, you know, where he uses. Um, he does have children, he would like to keep the rock, if at all possible, uh, the length, which is what's there right now, but it's up to you.
Can there be a section to the north that is less rock, more plants?
That's exactly what I was gonna say. Um, can we either add plants in the rock, in need of planting?
Yeah, I personally think that's a really good application, because it does two birds with one stone, you know, like, but it stabilizes, and it helps stabilize, and it also has, you know, permeability to go down.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, right.
So, I- I would love to see something like that.
Okay.
Want to design it?
Um, so what I'm gonna do is, what I really like to do, because I like to keep the options open, because I do need a landscape design too, um, instead of doing beach grass plugs, I'd like to specify only native plants inside the stone buffer, in that area where the red cedars are, so hundred feet.
Like beach palms are, like-
Well, I like a little blue stem, actually, because it's nice and clean, um, and, see, what happens is, when the beach grass starts growing, and the ticks go on it, and there's a lot of deer in the area, and-
Okay, so, but we at least need some type of a ratio, though.
Oh, like, well, I usually-
Like how many plants to how much stone, versus, you know, we don't want to see an abundance of stone, and then just a couple of plants, and, you know, you're in compliance, but we need to know what the ratio is.
So what we usually do is a spacing, um, instead of a ratio, per se.
Okay, then give us a spacing.
So, like, beach grass is every twelve inches on center, so, so, um, little blue stem comes in six inch pots.
Yeah.
And we could do every two foot on center, which will pretty much equal, because that's this wide and not a block.
Too tight, cause then they're not gonna do that thing, yeah.
You don't want to get them too tight, exactly, so I would say every two foot on center, or every three foot on center, a little blue stem, but I like to specify just native plants, and with appropriate spacing.
So you need to adjust your cover sheet and your plans to reflect that, that way it's clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are the- are there returns on this on either end?
No, it's-
To spot it up to the neighbor's property?
It just spots up, yeah. Okay, I will revise the cover, I will revise the plans, I will get it to you, and cut back a lot of boardwalk, and save a whole lot of money.
There you go.
And save red cedars, yeah.
Good luck with that. Anything else? It's a project on the water.
I know, I know.
On the southwest of the winds.
They're big.
Yeah, there's gonna be a whole discussion next time this comes back to, uh- So we're done with this one, right?
We're done with that.
Now, you wanted to put another one on here, right?
I would like to, if possible.
Nineteen, seat touch?
Correct, um, very, very similar situation, uh, it's in a cove in Rumsfeld, um, and it's bulkhead reconstruction, uh, and then same situation, um, I already, he- the owner wanted stone and walkway along the whole thing, I said, nope, not doing it, um, so he only does, how about forty feet, is that good enough, towards the right side of the property, the north side of the property, um, so I cut it back already, before even coming here.
And there's a lot of problems with this too, right, this is a pretty problematic property?
Well, the house is pretty much condemned, actually, and the fire department is going, is, we're offering the fire departments, they're gonna practice on this house, so we kind of need to get this, yeah, so Quog is gonna practice West Hampton, as well as Eastport Fire Department are gonna practice on this house.
Practice what exactly?
Burning it down.
Yeah.
Well, no, 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 they're not gonna burn it down, that would be a lot of fun, they're not gonna burn it down, so they go in, and they, um, you know, bust out the windows, they bust the roof for ventilation, they do all the fire department fun stuff, you know, with their gear on, no, we're not burning it down, but that would be a lot of fun. Um, so they're gonna go in and have fun, so they get, like, days, you know, you get Tuesday Wednesday, you get Wednesday Thursday.
It seems like there's a lot of, this bulkhead's all over the place, huh?
Yeah, it's- it's in really bad shape, prices still on this, it was, it was a mess.
It's just really interesting, I, you know, I know people love these walkways, they love along these bulkheads, it's just kind of like, I don't, I mean, I've lived on the water all my life, and I don't know why, like, you want more, because it's just more headache, and more to fix, and more- more for the ice to rip apart, and more for the tides to blow apart.
Yeah, not necessarily in this area, but flooding is a concern in this area, which is why I like the rock, because of flooding.
You know that, yeah.
That's right, you're right.
So, so, um, what I'd like to propose is also putting, um, I'd like to keep the stone where the walkway is just stone, because there actually is a- a single mom and a little boy moving into this house when it's done, um, and we're always concerned about ticks, so I'd like to keep that by the walkway, stone, because it's clean, no bugs, um, the rest of it, so everything to the left, um, I'd like to still do stone to put plants inside, but not beach grass. I wanna do the same thing, I wanna do the little blue stem.
The area of proposed decking that you want, uh, to look at us approving, is it gonna have helical anchors or some kind of mechanism, so when we get a- a large surge of water, it doesn't float up, and it doesn't-
Yeah, it always does in here, so we do that, we always do the posts extra long, um, it depends on the contractor, some of them do, do the concrete on the bottom.
I- I mean, with some, with tubes and-
Or we do helical J-bolt anchors.
Because I've, after Sandy, I don't know how many people's deck, these little decking, it was just like all over the valley, you know, and it's, and unfortunately, a lot of it was treated lumber way back, now we're using, you know, tropical hardwoods, I mean, even if you could use some kind of light penetrating decking here would be great, because it would never pull up, because it has the ability for the water to rise in, but I- I just want to make sure that it is properly engineered, and that we're not gonna have to, you know, have our marine maintenance guys pick up people's decks and stuff like that in the future.
Yeah, I always do like a J-bolt with an extra long post, at the very minimum.
I got a question.
Yeah.
I've never heard the words "blue stem" so much as today. So can you tell me, please?
So look up little blue stems.
What's the, yeah, please do, because I'm interested to know what is the difference in the deep rootedness between the Cape American beach grass and the blue stem, do they-
Blue stem's roots go down almost eighteen inches, um, you know, when it's fully grown, so it basically has like a spire that goes up the center, and it's kind of like a little puffy ball, it looks like a little dribble.
Yeah, I mean, cause the big concern is, like, yeah, I mean, you want it to look nice on the tunnel, but you want to have something to stabilize.
Yeah.
So if you don't have a big enough root base.
So what happens in high velocity areas, so like Marches Bay, Bayfront, Shinnecock, um, so what happens is, I like stone along those areas, because the tidal and the hurricane force winds and the wave will come up, wash over, take all the sand, there goes the beach grass, there goes the sand, it's stupid. So, you always want to do stones, even a larger stone, in a high velocity area, and/or a flooding area, because what happens if the flood comes up and over the bulkhead, and it's little pea gravel, which is silly, because it just takes it all with it, and then you have scouring out behind the bulkhead, a situation, and if the- And then you have scouring out behind the bulkhead, a situation, and if the bulkhead sheets aren't long enough, then it pulls out the bottom.
It collapses, yeah.
So you'd always, so stone really honestly strengthens a bulkhead, it stabilizes it and it provides drainage, so imagine a big, long fringe drain behind the bulkhead.
Mm-hmm.
Holds the plants in if the plants are inside the stone, because the stones are set in sand. And then the plants could pretty much, and I like to use not a beach grass necessarily because eventually a big clump of beach grass would hold up some sand and, and, you know, help erosion, but the shrub species or the grass species actually anchor and go down a lot lower.
This is like what I went back to, like, every time I have a return, there's gonna be a high tide bush. Because the high tide bush is the only real thing that's really gonna hold the.
Besides that, fragilities and we don't want that, so.
We don't really want fragilities. But I, I really, I, I know you're kinda like set on this planting for now, but I really would like to see multiple species because there are failures and there are dichotomies of plants where ones are able to like help the other.
Yeah.
You know, so, so rather than a monotroph, you know, like, throw some Montauk species in there, throw some.
No, you know, the Montauk species are not native.
Well, I mean.
I believe in Montauk.
But, yeah.
But they are salt tolerant.
I get it, I get it, I get it though. So that's why I like to give them at least the option, not specify beach grass, because then the, whoever's gonna close the permit now.
The shrub species will hold.
Is a good close the permit if it's less than, you know, more than beach grass.
And back to your point with the pea gravel, I know that, like, a difference, like, when we have a low-sail bulkhead, this whole idea that you're gonna plug plant in sand is ridiculous.
Yes.
You know, like, if you actually go into a marsh and stuck your hand into a marsh and felt what you're gonna have, you're gonna have like different sized rocks, clamshells, mussel shells, like, stuff that's holding the bio media.
Yep.
For a long enough time for the root system to actually build up. It's not straight sand.
You are absolutely correct.
You know, so it's like, I, I think that, like, actually coming into terms with something that's more stabilizing behind the bulkhead than just straight sand is, is ideal. And then you add species of plants that build a root system to hold that.
Right.
Is, is kind of the goal that we're all after.
Well, that's what we do on bluff restorations. We have to specify shrub species, actually. You know, but sometimes at the bulkhead, it's not practical because people wanna use their bulkhead in their waterfront. So, so the areas where the red cedars are, you know, on that other project, would be a great opportunity to put in and mix in and intermix some shrub species, some other grasses, because it's not just little blue stem. You could do switchgrass, you could do a lot of different species that will actually, you know, hold and they come in one gallon pot.
Mm-hmm. You're not gonna just get blown away the next time you get a high tide.
Exactly, exactly.
That's your other specialty, so.
That's the last thing I do.
Well, you wanna design a natural shorefront that's never been disturbed.
Yeah.
And then you have, you know, Spartina, you have Alton Plurie, you have.
And some people, some people don't have the money sometimes to do the shrubs because not everybody that lives by the water is a millionaire, so then, you know, they have the option of doing the beach grass, which is a, you know, a dollar 25 a plug for live. And, you know, you have to, so I have to kind of balance everything.
Sure. So where are we at on this specific application right now?
Scott, there's been numerous complaints about the fill behind washing into the creek. I don't see any dredging proposed on the application, so I don't know if that's something you guys wanna consider.
It absolutely is, I mean, there's gotta be some reclamation dredging here.
Well, normally what happens with any bulkhead, just in general, is five feet off the bulkhead always gets dredged as part of the project.
Okay, we're, we're not doing, we, we need it on the applications now because we've run into issues here, okay?
Okay.
Time and time again, from now on, don't use that as your rule of thumb, please.
Okay.
Specify, put it on there, that way we know, I'm not gonna get into examples, but we need to do that, please, so if we can amend that to deal with this concern.
Absolutely.
And bringing that material that is in the bay back and putting it on, on the property, you're gonna get a much better.
Absolutely.
Soil for, you know, plantings around the water. You know, a lot of these plantings like this, organic and.
True, and not get a nicer depth to bring a kayak up or something too.
Yes.
So, so, but in general, five feet always gets taken out, no matter what. If we do more, we're allowed to do 10, we're allowed to do up to 10.
Right, but for our application, we need it on there. We need it to say, reclamation, show it on there, that way there's no questions and everybody is aware. Again, I don't wanna get into examples, but.
I, I agree.
Yep.
So I'll add a reclamation. I do have to talk to the contractor and the owner to see if they're gonna do five or 10. But no matter what, I'll, I'll put it on and then.
Yeah, has to be.
Native species.
Right, in the future, no. Definitely do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for.
So Matt, where are we at with this one?
Do we hold it until we get those?
Hold for rot.
Yeah, we gotta hold.
Yeah.
We have to hold. All right, at least you got farther along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.